It's on the board.
So you called the order.
Yeah.
On board, I think we're.
Lund.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
Jacob.
Here. All right, approval of the city council minutes?
With your approval.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes. And adoption of the agenda.
Before you adopt, can you take guy six point two off? They're not going to be able to be here tonight, we'll schedule that for a meeting in June.
Point two?
Six point two. Yep. Trap needed return program for Carol Cash request.
Move to approve the amended agenda.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
All right. First and second readings? Let's see here. An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Capital Paving and Construction LLC for the 2018 street maintenance program, hot mix overlay in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, we're very pleased with the bids we've received this time. We received seven bids for overlay program, which is enough to norm. So we're very fortunate to have a good grouping of bids. Capital came in, but the capital paving destruction came in with the lowest bid. We're overlay of $209,011.38. In addition, we also bid, done some asphalt work out in cemetery, that came in $35,398. Staff estimate on the project had been $265,736. The total bid that Capital submitted is an amount of $244,409.38. Staff is asking that the ordinance be approved in an amount of $265,736, which was staff estimate. Reason for that, measuring and calculating asphalt, sometimes not exact science, so we leave it at the exact bid. Jenny Obergeiss will have to cover with a change order later on, and I might be able to have that fluctuation, but sometimes we might do an additional footage on our projects, so.
Capital's bid then was based on the quantity that appears in the bid tab, 2414?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Staff has approval of the ordinance as submitted.
I move that said bill be passed a second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Capital's Paving and Construction LLC for the 2018 street maintenance program, hot mix overlay in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Vance Brothers for the 2018 street maintenance program, polymer overcoat in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, Member State Council, on the other side of the coin, we've only received one bid for this project. Vance Brothers is one of the premium contractors that does it in this area. There's not too many others in the area that doesn't work. Their pricing is very comparable with what we had last year. We're in agreement with what they submitted for their bid cost on our quantities that we submitted. And we're asking that the city council would approve their bid in an amount of $164,358.41.
Is that, I mean, is that something these guys do special, then that's why none of those other companies would have been on it?
There's not too many companies in the area that do this type of work. We got to pull somebody up from St. Louis or Springfield area, which is kind of a regional area that each one of these contractors did. And so they just have that much demand as a year for this.
Move to pass that ordinance to second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Vance Brothers for the 2018 street maintenance program, polymer overcoat in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
An ordinance repealing Division Three of Article Two of Chapter Twenty-three, Cycling and Pedestrian Transportation Task Force of the Code of Ordinances. I think we're missing a word there. Of the Code of Ordinances. I'm missing a word there? Okay. You get used to saying it enough, it confuses you. Okay.
Basically, this is the request you guys had at the last meeting. So this combines the bike pedestrian transportation task force into the traffic commission. And then also it gives the traffic commission the ability to have basically a subcommittee to handle bike pedestrian transportation needs. So the first ordinance repeals the current ordinance, and then the second one is the new ordinance that's needed to put it into place.
So they still have the pedestrian?
You won't have, no, the one that's getting repealed is the Cycling and Pedestrian Transportation Task Force. It will never, it will no longer exist in the code. It'll be underneath the, it'll be in the amended ordinance of the traffic commission, where they have the ability to, the council will be able to appoint members that represent bike and pedestrian, and then there can be a subcommittee created under that at the World Traffic Commission. Just need motion to approve that one.
I'd move said bill be passed second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
This is an ordinance repealing Division Three of Article Two of Chapter Twenty-three, Cycling and Pedestrian Transportation Task Force of the City Code of Ordinances. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
The next portion of that is an ordinance amending Section Twenty-three dash thirty-six, Traffic Commission of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg.
I see that item C is where we incorporated the bicycling and pedestrian.
The last sentence of subsection A designates two members with special knowledge or interest in cycling and pedestrian issues, and then subsection C gives them the specific charge of making recommendations on those topics.
Okay. Do we, do we need to reappoint those members of the bicycle and pedestrian task force to this commission once it's established?
Will that be like a mayor appointment?
Yes.
Okay. So they'll start off like they're brand new. Okay.
Okay. All right.
So at the next meeting, we'll have to appoint those two back to the council.
Said Phil.
Right, the mayor appointments tonight, I mean, it's up to you.
Can we do that? I mean, if we were the mayor today, we can start, that will be on these two bodies.
So you move?
We move, yep.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
This is an ordinance amending Section Twenty-three dash thirty-six, Traffic Commission of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
All right. Other business. Proposal for community drone video. Start recording.
Well, you go to council. Like I'm standing, I'm a hoop, it's flooding, I have to go. Start staring blankly at the wall, and it's a reflex, not having a problem.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time to listen to me. A lot of y'all know me as a guy with a lot of bad ideas and far fewer good ideas, and that's the kind of nature of me, is I never stop thinking about ideas. I never give up, and I was always exploring new ways to do things. I've had my realtor's license now for a little over a year, since March twenty seventeen, and I've noticed a problem, and there's a potential solution to the problem. That's why I'm here, to see if it's a good idea or a bad idea, to get all the spears, you know, thrown my way. Since Old Drum became a member of this community, Old Drum Real Estate for that matter, July of twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, sorry, we closed to date seventy-eight houses. Brian will tell you, you know, he's in real estate, been doing a lot more than I have. I don't know what other realtors' numbers are, I don't know what they do. Old Drum Real Estate's closing about a million a week since January first of this year, and forty-four of our closings have been sight unseen closings. Great example, Topo Four Rich Boulevard, stayed on the market for months and months and months. Harrison A-ten Pilot at Davis-Monthan, I flew that property, I built a VR tour of it, sold it for a full price in about six hours. Point being is, is most of my closings and most of my real estate transactions, whether it be rental properties, we manage now fifty-six rentals, and most of our rentals are occupied now as sight unseen, building VR tours, building aerial videos. I'm finding in the real estate community, and this is going to elaborate to a bigger problem with the whole city, not a problem, but a good idea at least, maybe, is most of my buyers that are coming to me, especially in the military pipeline, they're from Davis-Monthan, there's some, you know, Highland Air Force Base I'm closing tomorrow with a couple out of Japan, never been to Missouri in their entire life. And when they see the houses that I'm showing them, they're thinking, well Chuck, I love the house, but I want to see the subdivision. So cool, I fly my drone up, I built a nice marketing video of the whole subdivision, just finished Highlands over on DD yesterday. And then the wife or the husband says, I love the subdivision, but I want to see the town. A lot of these guys, I'm having to verbally peel them away from Sedalia, or verbally, and there's no reason to peel them from, Nobnoster is a good community of itself, but I'm having to make a verbal explanation as to why they should buy in Warrensburg versus anywhere else. And aside from, you know, demographics and crime rates and median household income, all these stats that we can all quote, they want to see it. And I'm having to paint a picture verbally right now that I think could be better done with a year-long marketing video. A lot of the stuff we're doing right now, documenting different subdivisions, has helped Darren Baldwin, Mike Rich, Justin Bud from multiple, you know, developers sell lots of land. And my idea is multi-fold. In the real estate housing market, we address a couple council meetings ago, that there's a lot more demand right now than there is supply. And there's some resolutions and ideas of how to actually accomplish that. But when you go to these conferences, Recon, ICSC, I've been to them all, you know, I've been to Chicago at ICSC and Recon. As a developer, and I'm not a developer, I'm a wannabe developer that's working to develop in front of IHOP, and that's going to take a long time. It may not, but it may. You usually have sixty seconds to make your elevator pitch. You can show all the numbers from Retail Coach that you want, and the numbers are what's going to end up landing the deal. But if you're not selling a city, you're potentially going to lose that developer pretty quick. Great example right now is Opus. I don't know if y'all have heard of Opus or not. Huge real estate developer across the United States. Opus has interest in our thirty-four acres on Ridgeview, doing a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty unit apartment gated community complex. But they want to see Warrensburg, they don't want to come to Warrensburg, they want to see it visually, from the air somehow. My idea is fairly simple. I'm obviously, if you, some of you know me, I'm an Air Force pilot, I'm a drone pilot with Air Force, got three thousand combat hours in the Reaper and the Predator, so I know how to fly a bird, I have all the clearances, I have all the tools. The thought would be fairly simple, take the list of all these events that are happening in Warrensburg, all these great things, that food trick festival was the biggest hit I've seen in a long, long time. There were lines for that, those shacks, you know, maybe three hundred feet long. It was crazy. And that needs to be highlighted, not just from the air, but from the ground, narrated, put into a good four to five minute marketing video for the city, different aspects. And my intent would be to produce two separate videos, an unbranded marketing video for the city in all these different seasonality events, whether it be the pumpkin patch in Nobnoster, even though that's not part of our community, Whiteman, you know, participates in that a lot. Different events going on, the Old Drum Burgfest, which my dog beat Slim's dog in, I just wanted to say. No offense to him. All these different events, and actually document them from the air. The second video that I would like to produce on the more of the development side is there's a lot of dirt in Warrensburg that could be developed. The city has some of the dirt next to Walmart. Different aerial videos highlighting a common lump for sale, it's being very poorly marketed right now, and not many developers know, it just got on the multi-list, I would say, three and a half weeks ago, for the first time. No one knows it's there. No one knows about these different parcels of dirt, and if they do, they're seeing it from a CoStar or LoopNet or multi-list. So the idea is twofold, build a year-long marketing video and present that to council in fourteen months from now. The second idea would be any developable dirt within the city limits, actually do an aerial marketing video of highlighting and showing plat map overlays of all these different pieces of dirt, potentially who owns them, who are selling them, and kind of put it out there. Let Harold take it to Recon, ICSC, do what you may, put it on social media. But that's kind of where I'm coming from with this, it may be a bad idea. I'm, of course, Old Drum Real Estate, we're willing to split the cost of this. I'm having to hire, if we do this, a sensor operator, the bird that I'm flying is a movie grade bird, is twelve thousand dollar matrice, six hundred, it requires two people to fly, one for the pilot and one for a sensor operator. And so I'm going to hire a sensor operator from the twentieth tax quarter on an as-needed basis to allow him to control the camera. And then Chelsea Cantrell, she's the lead marketing agent over at Whiteman, she's, she's going to end up doing the narrating and the video editing. She's done all my past videos of Cahill, Country View, the Highlands, Lake Ridge, Lake Ridge South. She's, she's going to end up doing all the editing purposes of this, so. That's my idea, and it may be a bad idea, but I'm here to kind of discuss it. What questions y'all have?
Where can we see your videos? On YouTube page?
If you YouTube search, absolutely, if you YouTube search Old Drum Real Estate, you can see fifty or sixty videos. Brian has one up there, I shot him a video of Country View and Lake Ridge before I got my real estate license, and I've done some videos for Jeff Terry, Don Butterfield, before he got his license. Don's the only other licensed drone pilot within an eighty mile radius of here, myself and Don Butterfield.
And they're all, they're all on that business page?
Correct, yep, and it's just the YouTube page, Old Drum Real Estate. So there's other, and this is not to poke at any other realtor in town, by any means, because it's a service that very few people can provide, but just recently, there's a Van Buren, Missouri, there's a forty-four acre state park in Van Buren that a realtor in town has listed, and his brokerage paid me six thousand dollars to go down and to fly their property for them because they wanted a VR tour of an entire cave, and they wanted an aerial footage of what forty-four acres looks like. So that's telling you what this technology can do, and bringing sales sight unseen across the United States.
Did you say it would be a single video or video with different versions? Because you mentioned at one point a plat with available properties. My concern with that would be that it would be out of date within a year, or hopefully out of date.
Sure, and, and that's a good, good point. This idea is so evolving, where I even had the idea recently, when we're shooting each different event, maybe those different event, you know, vendors, like Main Street or Dickens Christmas, or all these different vendors, maybe they want their own raw footage or their own private video. That's something we can go down the path of. And on the plat map overlays, yes, absolutely, it'd be great if all this property was sold in a year, and then we're not even having this discussion anymore. The idea would be, while it's summertime for the plat map overlays, I think, ICSC's in July in Chicago? Is that correct?
It's in May.
May, okay.
In Chicago, it's in October. Las Vegas one is here in a few weeks.
I probably could have one for Recon in Vegas, but the idea would be at least for all the, a developing land, to have that done at least before ICSC in Chicago.
And with there being narration, what exactly would the angle be? Because I could see a video like this being beneficial for like WCVB or, you know, website wise, but with narration, I'm afraid it would narrow that.
Sure, and that's purely open for discussion. I had this idea probably a month ago, and I'm open to any ideas really. Even if there were, if you have, you know, the Old Drum Real Estate team shooting the video, shooting the raw video, and then you had somebody, I forget her name, over in the marketing department, you'd put me in touch with.
Marcy?
Marcy, maybe? Having somebody that spearheads the narration, and I'm sorry, I thought she had. Having somebody that spearheads the, how this is, project's going to be, you know, driven down, what the words are going to be, if there's any words, having multiple copies of the video. Once you get the raw footage, the raw footage is the time, the time intensive part, you know, for every minute of raw video, or for every minute of editing video that we have, it's usually been an hour's worth of shooting. So I don't know where this could lead, but I'm open to any suggestions or ideas.
My experience has been typically in these is that we maintain authority to approve the final script.
Right.
We have developed the script, and so it represents what we need it to represent.
Would the city get the B-roll?
Second.
The B-roll, which is basically like your raw footage of like everything you shoot without editing?
The goal, I've talked, I've talked to Chelsea about it, and she wants to work this on an incremental basis, whereas via Dropbox or any other source, I give her raw footage to every single event where she starts chopping and editing. But in the same regards, I can definitely deliver all raw footage of every single event.
You said that Old Drum Realty would cost share, as I understood what you said?
There's, and I have a hard time putting a price on this, because of course I have a vested interest, this is a win-win scenario is the way I see it. Because of course I'm going to use the video to help sell houses, and I'm going to use the video to help develop real estate. That's the goal.
Right.
When I was trying to initially put a cost to it, when I was discussing with Harold in his office, our initial price point was between twenty-four and thirty thousand. I could not put a price point to it. You can go on various different professional drone websites, the nearest is in Kansas City, and they charge five hundred bucks an hour. I have no idea how many hours I'm going to have vested into this.
Yeah.
So essentially, I did one of these things, and said, that looks about right, you know?
I'm a little bit apprehensive, I guess, with the city committing to finance part of the video that's, would be specifically targeted to a local business.
Sure, and that's to answer two, to answer two questions, is I'm looking to get paid after everything is done and after everybody is happy. So when I deliver a crappy video in fourteen months, tell me it's crappy, and I want to fix it, I'm going to fix it a hundred times until it's right. On the second part to that, is there's going to be an unbranded video. So we're not going to have Old Drum Real Estate branding all of the video with my phone number and, you know, contact Chuck to buy this house a lot. It's going to be a Warrensburg branded video. It's going to be a video that we, as Old Drum Real Estate, do not have copyrights to. So it's going to be a video that if Brian wants to use it, if you guys want to use it, if Darren Baldwin wants to use it, it's free for grabs, you know what I mean?
I could see the benefit to this being the, so B-roll is what they call it, like the raw footage that you can, in the Air Force, we would shoot just B-roll. And it was stuff that you would use later and put it to a purpose, like maybe it was for this story, but it's a picture of an A-ten flying and landing. And then you can sort of make it part of your story, whatever you're trying to brand. I could see for that benefit, having that raw footage available that would convey a totally different message than what Old Drum Realty is doing.
Sure. My idea too, I've been to a lot of the events in Warrensburg, you know, like Get the Red Out and the Homecoming Parade, and all these different events that we intend to shoot. And this list is not all encompassing, this is the list that I believe Janine, my assistant, had pulled. But if there's more events that need to be added, let's add the events. I want to do this and do it right the first time, it's going to be a twelve month progress. If I got to start over, well, that's twelve months of my life gone. The idea could be is, just like, you know, you had said, is have different segments of, you know, this is the Homecoming Parade, and this is the Farmer's Markets, when it's up and cranking on Fridays and Saturdays or whatever, and each different segment, those can be built into its own separate video. So if the producer of the Farmer's Market wants to have their own Farmer's Market video, have at it, you have the B-roll.
So would you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm, I just had a quick question, is it aerial only, or will you have someone on the ground shooting as well?
I haven't decided yet. The camera, and this will be up for debate as well, the camera that I use is called the Hallsbad Black Eyes. It's a movie grade, so this particular bird that I have, and the camera that I have is what they've shot most of the Fast and Furious movies with, that's the level of camera we, that we use. We upgraded six months ago from a Phantom Four to this. Point being is the camera can come off the bird, and I can actually use ground footage. There's special harnesses to make it look like you're, it's called a gimbal, I'm sure you're familiar, there's a special gimbal you can get for these things. We don't have that ground mount gimbal, it's something we could acquire if we needed to.
I guess my thought on it is aerial footage is only as good as you can decipher what you're looking at.
Sure.
So like Dickens Christmas, if Marcy wanted to use it as a video to promote Dickens Christmas and why you should stay overnight because it's a multi-day event, it'd be hard if you were just looking at people wandering the streets from up high, right? Versus like, look at everybody dress up and...
Definitely, if you see my videos on our YouTube page, most of those were not shot with this new camera. The typical bird that most amateurs and even professional real estate people fly with are the Phantom Four greater below this camera, I can read a license plate from seven miles out. So that being said, is I can be over Walmart, and I can still see Dickens Christmas with relative clarity, you know? Not that I'm going to be that, that far out, but you're never going to get that ground perspective like you're talking about, so we can look at, if we need to integrate that, let's integrate that.
So I think it's a good idea, but I'm going to look to Matthew on where we're going to find the money.
This would be something I have to be pleased to throw a hundred process.
Oh, yeah.
Which is why he's provided some options to pay for, I mean, one is we can pay upfront, but the other one is there's an option here to pay at the delivery of the video, which would be a year out, so.
I actually even took out, I'm trying to interrupt, I took out the pay upfront thing. I want to be, I've always been one of those people that I'm held accountable for my work, and I don't want to be given fourteen thousand dollars and then slack on it. So I took out the option of paying upfront, you can pay whatever you want, but I just say pay when it's done.
So do you see a library being established with, with different categories that people would pay to use? Is that?
Not pay to use, there's definitely going to be a B-roll library, but this is going to be open source documentation. This is going to be open source in the sense that whoever wants access to it has access.
So what's this produced and on the shelf, then it's accessible by anyone, is it? That's what I'm understanding.
That's where your issue is going to come up, is that, I mean, I know like the couple of videos I've done, they've been chopped up, stolen, I mean, there's several people who have, who are using them currently for their marketing. So to do something of this sort, the city's going to have to have control of these videos. Otherwise, you're going to, you're going to have videos all over the place that are chopped up and...
Is it copyrightable?
It is copyrightable.
The question is not whether or not you can establish the rights to it, the question is how you control and enforce those.
Exactly.
Well, and the legalities of it would be interesting to me, because in the Air Force, anything I shot as a photographer using taxpayer money and stuff like that was government property, which means that anybody could pull it off the internet, and as long as they're not selling it, they could use it too. I would think it'd be very similar with taxpayer money used to pay for it.
Well, if the city has a license to use something that's copyrighted, while that becomes property of the city, that doesn't give the city the right to violate those restrictions.
Wouldn't the city have the...
So the question is whether or not the city owns the intellectual property rights. If it does, then you're right, it could be subject to those types of requests, but if it only has a license to use, then it doesn't, that doesn't imply or grant permission to pass on it.
Maybe that's the way to go.
I see that we're talking about, you know, basically YouTube videos. Is there anywhere else that you're posting these, or is it all on your YouTube page for Old Drum?
Sure, and I'm going to give away some trade secrets here, yes. So every house that I've listed, with exception to one I've sold within fourteen hours. And those houses that I've listed, including a listing that I'm taking tomorrow, already have pre-sold. These houses, I'm actually building videos of, and VR tours of, and I'm Facebook boosting them over every major Air Force base that pipelines to Whiteman.
But are you posting them through your YouTube channel is what I'm saying? The videos are on your YouTube channel, and then you're sharing it through other social media avenues, is that correct?
Yes, so you can upload to YouTube, or sorry, you can upload to Facebook directly, but I am posting to YouTube for now.
YouTube, okay. I see that you have, and I'm on the page now, I see that you have three followers on your page, and it looks like your best video is the Cahill video, which makes sense, that's the hottest neighborhood in the area, was that your video? And I see that it has a hundred and ninety-seven views. And I see that it has a hundred and ninety-seven views, so I mean, that's, that's cool. Looks like the next one from Warrensburg has sixty-six views, and they go downhill from there. Looks like you have twenty-five up there total.
Sure.
I like the, I like the drones, I like to play with them, you know, I am not an expert like you, but I like the overhead view perspective. But when looking at marketing videos, that's generally, whether, any kind of video, that's generally a small component for a promotion video. Now, in the real estate market, they want the detailed stuff, because they wanna see the ins and outs of that property, they wanna be there without being there. So I get it for real estate, before the promoting Warrensburg events and stuff like that, I see the ground game being more important than the overhead shot. And I understand that you're the expert on the overhead shot, but there's a whole lot of other work that has to be done, and I think, you know, in the, in the future, having that perspective, especially on those larger events, we can kind of showcase, you know, five seconds of B-roll for this type of event, and then, you know, we're showing people, which is what they wanna see. I still think there's absolutely value in that.
Sure.
I don't know, in my opinion, if, you know, the cost of this, and focusing all on the aerial footage, even if we had results that were ten times, you know, what you're seeing, you know, over a six-month period, on even your most popular video, I don't, I don't think that having two thousand views on, you know, one video for a particular event would, I almost said be worth, but it, the investment, the sizable investment that's needed to get there. I think a hybrid approach of a few videos, having, you know, the aerial shot, but a whole lot of other dialogue and promotion that goes along with it, so.
Keep in mind, and that's a very great point, keep in mind, when we've built these videos, we've marketed them to one or two specific people who are looking to buy that specific house. When we produce this video, you know, my, my job is to produce the video and give raw footage, my job is not to take that, that potential force multiplier, that catalyst, and make it what it can be, right? This is a force multiplier and catalyst we're talking about. If you take the video and you put it on a movie screen at ICSC, in your booth, how many tens of thousands of people may see it? I don't know. But if you do nothing with it, and you bookshove it, you're right, no one's gonna see it.
The other thing here is, we've talked about funding the development process, so drone footage is somewhat new concept, I don't know how many cities have gone out and solidified drone footage of their communities, so I don't know what the going rate is for that right now. When I was in Knoxville, we participated in a program through the National League of Cities, where they came and shot community videos. It was free to the city, but then they would sell advertising around the video to different employers and businesses within your community, that's how they made money off of it. Now, that being said, I think Mr. Norton's idea here is a bigger concept, because they're just gonna come for a two or three day period and shoot specific shots to do the video that they've already outlined in their script. I do think there is some merit to the idea of having a year-long video footage, so you can show the community through the seasons, you can show the different festivals and activities, I think you can show the vibrancy of that, or you're not gonna get that with the community videos through the National League of Cities, but there, you're not paying anything for it either, versus something like this. And so, I do think that marketing our community better, and telling our story better, and having that information available for us to do it is good and valid, but again, we still have to bear in mind process, and how we pay for it with taxpayer dollars and those types of things. And so those are just a few things I wanna present to the council to think about as you continue to consider that.
Any other questions? I mean?
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Six-two is off the agenda now. Let's see, updated drug and alcohol testing policy for federal compliance.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, while talking about policy and procedures, it's nearly as much fun as talking drug footage as necessary. Back late last year, the Federal Department of Transportation announced one of the largest changes to their drug testing program in over fifteen years. That national regulatory update, which went into effect earlier this year in January, has led to many changes in drug testing programs, it's affected drug and alcohol policies and procedures for companies, as well as cities who have CDL drivers, DOT drivers, as well as security and safety sensitive positions. Probably the most recognized change in those regulations were the addition of four semi-synthetic drugs, primarily what you've been hearing in the media is classified as the opioids that is added to the testing panel in this regulation. That's the hydrocodones, the hydromorphones, oxymorphones, and oxycodones. In addition in that, it also changed the MRO verification process, which the MRO is the medical review officer that's associated with the drug testing company that we utilize to do the random testing. So, with that, you know, these changes require really us to look at our drug and alcohol personnel policy and make revisions to that policy. So, what you have here, and the staff is recommending accepting this revision, is updating section 600, policy number 606, the drug-free and alcohol-free workplace policy to our personnel policy manual to City of Warrensburg.
Move to adopt the resolution?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the City Council on April ninth, staff received bids for the roundabout project. Only two bids were received for the project. This is a TDD project, with a total budget this time of a million dollars. The bid came in with the engineering construction and the advertisement, total of a million three hundred forty-one thousand and four dollars. The bids are over budget, staff is asking direction from the city council as to whether to approve or reject a bid with the possibility of comeback and rebidding in the fall, where we felt we might have a larger pool of bidders for the project. This is for discussion for the city council, and the staff is asking direction as to which way they'd like to go with the process.
As we talked about earlier today, as we're doing council tours and took you around all the different public works projects, I'm supportive of the recommendation to basically reject all bids and rebid this out late fall, early winter, for a couple of reasons. One is, obviously, if council wants the direct staff to continue to move forward with this and get this project done sooner rather than later, we can do that, and the finance director and I, and Lund can probably look through and find funding to scrape together to do this, but it's gonna tighten up a lot of our budget considerably, and we still have to make it through October one with this budget, and we still have a few other projects to complete, including the Holden Street project and some others, that if we move forward with this project, that tightens up the budget considerably, and if any of those come over, we're not gonna be able to find any additional funds to do those projects either. I also think that, given that there's a lot of bidders, and given that it was bid a little bit later in the process, and we've had a lot of construction going around in the area, a lot of our contractors are really busy, so I don't know that we got the best bids. Typically, when they're really busy and they already have projects lined up, they'll throw you a number, but it's usually at a higher amount, because they have to come up another project they're already committed to in order to do that, and so they'll throw, if you make it profitable enough for them, they'll come do it, but it's not a high priority to them, that's usually reflected in the numbers of the bids. And, so I think that it behooves us to try and rebid this at a later date, earlier in the process, when they're looking for their contracts for their businesses for that construction year. There is some risk to it, though, we don't know what the economy's gonna do as far as prices for materials and those types of things between now and next fall, so there is a possibility that those could go up. And then, as Councilmember Watts pointed out today too, the state legislature is moving forward with consideration of changes to the-
Permealing wage.
Permealing wage laws, and if that changes, that could save us a significant amount of money on this project as well, and I think that might be worth waiting and see what the state legislature does and rebid after that as well. So, I agree with our director's recommendation that at this time, all bids be rejected, and we'll rebid it this fall and spring. I think it also gives our staff some time, we've got a lot of irons in the fire right now with a lot of projects, I think this allows them to focus on those projects and make sure those get done right, instead of spreading our staff too thin, and trying to get a bunch of things done. With the budget process where it's at right now, I don't know that we're gonna be budgeting a lot of projects in the next fiscal year, and so I think this is one that will fit nicely into the next fiscal year.
I would just like to add to that, I think it's important for the public to know that this is not a part of the bond issue, this is funds that would come from the TDD.
That's correct.
So, we are not going back on our commitment to the public to push forward with those projects that the community approved.
Yes, all the bond issue projects are moving forward and are on schedule, and are within budget, and, but this is one that the finance director and the public works director and I worked on through the TDD and restructured some debt, and upgraded some revenue projections that we were able to, with that being paid for without a tax increase to the general public, which was approved by the bond issue, so this was not included in the bond issue projects, because it was already funded through other mechanisms beforehand.
Also delaying will allow the TDD to grow over the next several months to a year, it's gonna continue to receive revenue and grow, and hopefully we can-
At the time we did those revenue projections, MC Sports was still in business-
Right.
-and Brown's Barbecue was still in business, those have since closed, so the TDD isn't getting quite as much revenue as the numbers we built off of. And hopefully, here over the next little while, maybe we get some more tenants in there and-
The restaurant, the restaurant should be open in the middle of May, again, so.
Hopefully we get something in the old MC Sports building as well, but it does buy us a little bit more time to get some more additional revenue into that system.
Just need a motion.
So, what's that, what's that gonna put us, I mean, 'cause our original timeline was, when was our original timeline to have that project done?
This fall?
So, we're moving everything, what are we projecting our new timeline to be to have it completed?
We've been bidding in the fall, then we did the summer project.
Right. To summer two thousand nineteen.
Start in spring.
All right. To summer two thousand nineteen, so we're basically pushing it back a year.
Yeah.
Have you seen a lot of accidents in that area?
Saw a really unlucky deer a couple weeks ago.
They were all over. Roundabouts won't have a deer.
I think people are being a lot more cautious over at that intersection now.
It's a big intersection, you've got a lot of visibility, both directions.
It's dark though sometimes when you come from getting into Warrensburg.
Traffic dies down, so it's, it's not bad. Well, I think we have more at, where we had one today at LA and Maguire than we do up there.
Yeah. I'd still like to flip that stop sign around, though, when you're coming off the, when you come off the thirteen on the old one, old thirteen, flip that stop sign around so the people coming on the old thirteen are stopping, and when you're coming off the highway, you just continue to go, because that's where, that, because when you come off of that, you're in an angle, it's hard to see back your direction out, there's not a whole lot of houses back there, but it'd be nice if we could just, for an immediate thing, is flip those stop signs around. I don't know, maybe that's something the traffic commission could take up, so.
So, I have the first for traffic.
Yeah. But the traffic commission's gotta approve it, so.
We'll put that on our next agenda.
Okay.
Good idea.
I guess I'd make a motion that we would delay the project until a fall bidding.
Okay, till fall. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
That one's painful, but yes.
I could've said more too, I get it.
Yeah. But if you don't have the money, you don't have the money, that's it. All right, appearance of the council not listed on the agenda. Oh, yes, we do. Scott and Morgan Homberg.
I brought a play expert. She wanted to talk, but I don't think she is now. This'll be pretty quick, they're fairly quick. Robin asked for updates on the Inclusive Park fundraising. The energy's exciting, I know, like, things I'm willing to announce at this point, a meeting with Will's, they're gonna give us another five thousand dollar check to the park, so that'll come in. Embridge, you know, the pipe players are delivering another check of twenty-five hundred next week. We've had several different events, some things that are happening, you know, we had a breakfast blast, that money has yet to be determined exactly how much. Tasha Johnson County, the BiLo pin-up has extended, I was talking with them, and they extended their pennies and the pin-up until May fifteenth. Be Inclusive, Shipshape Rentals having a big fundraiser at Northside Christian Church. Then Brittany Jewel Photography is donating for proceeds from folks that book parties. Abilities, one of our sister residential services, having a garage sale. They also had a t-shirt sale that's yielded about a thousand dollars at this point. Facebook donations, we have Ava Lund, who's been rocking and rolling on her birthday, Natasha Maddick, birthday is doing well. Then, you wanna talk about Food Truck? Okay. She wanted to on the way in, and then she's like, "I'm not talking to those people." Not those people, she's so shy. Anyway, so we went to Food Truck, we know that was over a thousand dollars, so the excitement's there, I really anticipate, you know, that we're gonna hit the goal, I think the last few thousand will probably be, you know, tight, I'll sell, sell one of my sons or something like that. But also, though, some cool things have happened, is we've had some contractors, as we've made touch to different folks that potentially donate, but also looking at, and we sent Danielle some information on it, maybe helping with the parking lot out there, et cetera, et cetera. So, the energy that came from what the city did is gonna create, I think, a lot of stuff. So, again, I don't wanna commit total dollars yet, because I want the excitement high and people to do, but I think we're doing really well, and appreciate the city's support of it, so. Any questions of myself or my residential play expert? The only thing Morgan wants is, when we were out at Shepherd Park, she wants Jeff to give us the merry-go-round for the farm when it's been replaced, so that's outside of this meeting, but I just thought I'd throw it out there. Any questions, or?
Yeah.
All right, that was it.
Sounds good.
We'll be back, next city council's the fourteenth, right?
Oh, yeah.
May fourteenth.
All right, mayor appointments.
Can you pronounce it?
I got it, I just gotta get to it, there we go. Just gotta hit all the right buttons. All right, we are going to, glasses on, read that.
Say this name. I think it's Atuski.
Is it? Atzuki?
Atuski.
Atuski?
Atuski.
Okay, I wouldn't have got that, no, Zach.
Maury.
So, Atuski Maury, we're gonna appoint her to the Diversity and Inclusion Commission.
Everybody agrees.
Just need your motion to approve it?
Move to her. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
So with the mayor appointments, do you call, the mayor calls, or you call and tell them, remember, we had that conversation of how they know that they got on it?
Lately, Brian's been having me send him letters, and like the one on PNC recently- And like the one on PNC recently, I'd send him a letter. And then the park board. And I copied Danielle and Barb.
And then do we have the two names for putting them on the...
Okay, so the bike would be... Monda. And who's the other person? Is it Jennifer Yost? Or is it Bob Russell?
I don't know who was on that commission before. I don't know.
Monda was one. I don't know what the other one.
These were the other names, but I didn't hear from any of them.
Yeah.
I had wondered when you said... Maybe we better just make it...
Monda, yeah. I would say do that one.
Definitely Monda.
That was for sure.
So Monda Reynolds. But do you know what? Those are the other people. But I hadn't heard from them.
Okay. Well, we'll do Monda and then I'll check on the other one to make sure that's good. Okay. So we'll also make a motion to approve Monda Reynolds for the Traffic Commission.
Our chairman's term has expired. And by the ordinance you just passed, we need to appoint the chairman also.
Okay. Does he want to keep doing it?
He can't. He's termed out.
Oh, he's termed out. But wouldn't you guys appoint the chair?
As I read the ordinance, the mayor...
Who is it?
The mayor appoints the chairman of the Traffic Commission.
Is that the only one I appoint the chair to?
Yeah, normally you don't...
Because normally, it's normally the committee needs to...
Decide who the chair is.
And decides who the chair is.
The mayor actually puts whoever they want. So the new mayor wants a planning zoning somebody different or somebody on traffic different or whatever. That's what the mayor does, is appoints who's on those committees.
Right. I appointed on the committees, but the committee decides who's going to be in charge of the committees.
But we still need someone.
It's outlined in the code that the Traffic Commission, the chairman, is appointed by the mayor.
So this one's different than all the other ones, yes?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. All right. I wasn't prepared for that question, so.
I wasn't either. Who was?
Is there somebody saying they want to do it?
No one's had the discussion. I can't remember his name. It's something, isn't it? I think it's him.
Kerry Burden.
Kerry, that's right.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I know where it was, but I don't know.
I didn't realize he'd been the chairman.
So I guess he's been the chair and his term has expired.
So all right. So I guess we'll need to find out who, if there's a party on that who's interested in doing it, and then we can appoint that person.
Yeah, you've got one more to appoint for the bicycle, anyway.
Correct.
So we'll work on that.
Okay.
So we'll need to... Chairman.
We'll have that fixed for the next meeting.
Do you want to take a vote on the...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Do you need a vote for Monda?
Vote to approve. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
I think we're in pretty good shape there. We're short one there, but I think other than that, I think we're in pretty good shape.
The chairman and then the other person.
Right.
And the next meeting, appoint the two of the bike folks for the planning zone or for the...
Right. Yeah, so that's... So other than that, I feel the other boards are in pretty good shape as far as the info.
Yeah, traffic is always the one.
All right. Okay. Miss ladies, matters of the mayor and our city council.
I'm not going to go there. Okay. I'll be good.
I don't have anything, so. City managers' report?
Most of everything I had to report is outlined in the city manager's report in your packet. Again, I just want to reiterate and thank publicly those that helped organize and put together the Food Truck Festival. I think it accomplished everything I had hoped and envisioned. It provided a good opportunity to educate now and the food vendors and the public that we do allow that type of business within our community. And the turnout from the community was great. So special thanks to Salma Sahum, our UCM intern, who organized and put that together, and Marcy Bryant from the Visitors Bureau, as well as the UCM representatives that helped put all that together. So continue to hear positive feedback about the negative comments and expect to have more food trucks. So that's the worst.
Yes, that's all I heard.
That's really good. And so I will be following up with those vendors this week and seeing if they're willing to do it on a more regular basis. But I guess for the listening audience or those who are watching this video later, our current code does allow those food vendors to operate at any time as long as they obey the parking regulations and have their permit and those types of things. So they don't have to wait for a festival. They can come and show up anytime as long as they abide by the code, which includes a certain number of feet away from interesting restaurants, brick and mortar restaurant and some of those types of things. But the whole purpose of having the food festival was to demonstrate that we do allow that. But I will follow up with those vendors, educate them, let them know they don't have to wait for a festival to operate. And two, is see if they're willing to do it on a more regular basis. Those do tend to work a little bit better when there's a congregation of them on a set schedule that people know where to find them and have to find them themselves.
Do they have to report their income for sales tax purposes?
Yes, they're required to have a tax ID number. It will be registered with the state, which includes reporting of their sales and paying sales tax.
Do they report... So I guess, does the sales tax collected within the city of Warrensburg for a food truck, is that given to Warrensburg?
I'm not sure how that's distributed or how the state determines that and figures that out. I don't know the details of that.
I would be curious to know because based on what we estimated their sales could potentially be, that could be beneficial.
I think it's where they're registered in, like when they had their business license.
Usually you would think it'd be a use tax of some kind for being here.
I don't know if the state requires that level of detail in their reporting. So I know for my kids' business, they just... They tell how much they've sales they've had that quarter. There's no question about where that was sold or generated from to distribute out. They just report it per quarter and then they calculate out the sales taxes and write a check to the state. And where the state sends that, I'm not really sure.
Yes.
I have nothing further to report.
In the month of May, we'll be... Staff will be conducting meetings with the community organizations come to council for their yearly requests, funding requests. So far, we have all the numbers in now for March and we're up 16.71% in revenues over this time last year. So we're doing very well in revenues. I'll have more information for everybody at the budget retreat on Thursday.
I have nothing additional.
Marcy? Danielle?
I'll break tradition. Couple of things, just to give you an update of where the wage and benefit study is. We do have all of the job descriptions submitted to us from the Austin Peters Group. In addition, we did... We're informed this week that they have gotten 100% participation from the cities that we requested to have comparisons from, which is tremendous. You don't see that very often. So they are in the process of looking at those and making their final comparisons and will make recommendations to us. Right now, it looks like they're on schedule with what we asked them to do. So that'll be coming forward later in May, early June. Also, next week, we'll have our annual summer hiring party in cooperation with Parks and Rec. Finance personnel are helping us. The PD is helping us. And of course, Gary and Randy are helping us. The Wi-Fi over there is going to help us tremendously this year so we don't have to utilize something in the center for a hotspot. So we will process through approximately 30, 35 individuals for the summer for Parks and Rec.
I worked an accident today at Double D in Hail Earth McGuire. It was a commercial for seatbelt usage because this woman's vehicle rolled twice. And had she not been wearing her seatbelt, she probably would have been ejected. Yeah. And so, as it turned out, she went to the hospital with a little bit of neck pain and that was it. So walked away from what could have been a tragic accident. So that's my seatbelt soapbox. Wear them and it will save your life.
Probably all the side curtain airbags is what helped the dog.
Yeah.
The dog?
Well, she had unrestrained dog in the car. And I think a lot of times people forget about that. You know, the unrestrained dog, this is a little dog, but if you have a big dog in your car and it's not restrained, that dog becomes a projectile and can actually injure you and the dog. So, you know, think about your... Think about a seatbelt for your dog. They make them. And if you have an accident like that, it can save not only your life...
Yeah. No, they don't like them. They've got to be trained to wear them.
Since our last council meeting, I received an individual... Some individual recognition from Ingram's Magazine. Was selected to be in their 40, under 40. Most influential business and community leaders in the 22-county region for them. So that was some exciting news for me, especially in the last year. And I can still say I'm under 40. And also, I was unable to attend the Food Truck Festival because I was selected to attend the Leadership Missouri program. And so I joined the 2018 class of that. There was 39 folks from across the state. And so once a month for the next seven months, I'll be spending a few days traveling the state to visit with community leaders, learning about various topics similar to the CLIME program that we have here in our community, but at a statewide level. So I got a chance last week was Jefferson City. So statewide government, we got to meet all the statewide office holders, spent some extensive time with the governor at the governor's mansion. And we enjoyed our time. We got to meet a lot of neat folks, so.
Good. Is that the UMKC program or is that the...
No, it's sponsored by the Missouri Chamber.
Okay. I bet UMKC's got one, too.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Good.
All right. I don't have anything. So I guess we go to the council Sunday.
One more thing before we forget, because I forgot. I'd like to introduce Crystal Ryman, our new Main Street director. She's here in the audience. I want to say that less. So congratulations, welcome aboard. And we look forward to working with you and expect great things from Main Street in the future.
No pressure.
Next, we had an election on April the 3rd. And we now have an official new city council member. Brian Jacobs was elected. And in order to complete the process, we need to pass this ordinance. So this is an ordinance declaring the election of one council member for a three-year term at the general election held on Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018. Last need a motion? Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
What happens if I say no?
Well... We couldn't do it this time. If you get your one no vote, we couldn't...
Oh, my.
We'd have to wait another time and hope you change your minds.
Has that ever happened?
Not that I know of.
Oh, my.
But it may... It probably has. Good, thank you.
Should have happened somewhere.
And Jacobs?
Yes. What if I said no?
What if you changed your mind?
Yeah.
Too late now.
This is an ordinance declaring the election of one council member for a three-year term at the general election held on Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes. Little pause there.
I know. My question, I think, would be to Doug, if someone did...
If you did say no, we would have to wait.
Couldn't be on the council anymore for two more years. I can, but I'm just wondering, what would that position of mine be if I'm not going to? What would happen if I had to maybe get off the council for medical reasons or something like that? What would that position, who would you get to fill it?
If someone vacates the council because, like, they don't live in the city anymore or they resign for some other reason, then the remaining council members appoint someone to fill that position until the next municipal election, at which point the remainder of that term is filled by special election.
I was just curious.
We've had to do that.
Okay.
We've had elections for two-year terms or even one-year terms before.
All right. Now we're on the council Sunday.
Okay. So now... Did you look down there?
No, I didn't.
Good, good.
All right. We would like to thank you for your excellent leadership.
Thank you.
I will say, I think this is... I know more people who know who the mayor is now than ever before. You kept yourself very busy and very productive in great ways. And I think it was excellent representation.
Thank you.
I think the public thing on the radio was... I think that was good. Know what I mean?
It was. I will say that I enjoyed doing it. I mean, it was actually... There were times that it was stressful, but other times it was extremely enjoyable. I loved working with everybody over in the community. And, you know, I'm still here. I'll still be involved. So I still plan on being at the ribbon cuttings. It's just somebody else will be introduced as the mayor instead of me. But so look forward to still being involved, so.
One last thing. I need you to...
Oh, yeah.
Raise your right hand.
Right where? That's what I did this conference to you.
I, and state your name, please.
I'm Brian Jacobs.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess...
That I possess.
The qualifications...
The qualifications.
...prescribed for a council member.
To prescribe for a council member.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I'll support the Constitution.
...of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of this state...
The provisions of all laws in this state.
Affecting cities of the third class...
Affecting cities of the third class.
And the ordinances of the city...
And the ordinance of the city.
And that I'm not directly or indirectly...
I'm not directly or indirectly.
Interested in any contract...
Interested in any contract.
Under the city.
Under the city.
Or any work done by the city.
Or any work done by the city.
Or furnishing supplies for the city.
Or furnishing supplies for the city.
Or any of its institutions.
Or any of its institutions.
Or will I be...
Or will I be...
Or will I be during the term of office?
Or will I be during the term of my office?
I will faithfully to be myself...
I will faithfully to be myself.
In this office...
In this office.
For which I was sworn...
For which I was sworn.
This 23rd of April...
This 23rd of April.
2018.
2018.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, I'll move it to the next agenda here.
Maybe we'll close out this meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so, close this meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so we'll close this meeting, and now we'll open up the special city council meeting.
Lund?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Watts?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Jacobs?
Here. Adoption of new business agenda?
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes. Alright, election of the mayor, the nominations for the mayor?
I would like to nominate Danielle Johnston to be mayor.
Just second. If it's recorded.
No, it's not.
I didn't think.
But thank you for your...
Okay.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
So, you'll go ahead and...
I'll go ahead and turn it over to her now? Okay.
Now, I pulled that chair way up, so you might have...
Oh, yeah. I'm only gonna be, I'm only gonna be holding it for a second, we're likely so. Okay.
Oh, here's your phone.
Oh, thanks. Okay. Yes, it does, be careful.
Okay, so, election of chairman pro tem?
I'd like to nominate Casey Lund as chairman pro tem for coming year.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Congratulations.
You want to change seats?
So, Casey?
Oh, is there a special sponsor? Yeah. I said I'm only gonna be sitting here for a second. Alright. Still don't figure out how I'm ever gonna get over to that side of the...
You have to make a deal with them.
For three years. How does the rest of the rotation work?
What I have been, what I was always told was that the chairman pro tem is always the second on the vote, so he could, if he could, he could change with either one of them, if they agree to it.
Everybody's just random.
Uh, yeah, it's all in hand.
I didn't know if it was like by seniority and that's why I was over here, it's not good.
So, if he did, if you all wanted to change, because I know, Robin, you've been first to vote before, it's been a few years ago.
Obviously.
I was the first year out.
I'm just kidding.
Yeah, but you were.
I did not want to.
First or last, it's not, it's not, I'm gonna take my vote as first or last.
It's just you two that need to sit where you do and vote where you do, and then the mayor's always the last.
O'Fast, I'm not sure if you guys remember the night Bob and I got elected, but I just did it real fast. Ready, Casey? I do, because I have a selfie of me there and...
That was a good, that was a good picture, too.
Alright, miscellaneous matters from the mayor and or city council.
I would like to make a particular note and thank past mayor Brian Jacobs for his service to the community.
Thank you.
Well done, well done, sir.
He's been very willing, he's gone to so many things.
Yep, big shoes to fill.
Agreed. Anybody else? Picture time, good job.
There you go.
You need a picture of the two fast? Congrats fellow alum.
Thank you.
Mine was like 10 years ago.
Was it?
Yeah.
It's the best class ever, like everybody we ran into. Class of 2005, class whatever, best class ever.
This is their 2002.
I will, yeah. Are you talking about Ingram's, or are you talking about Leadership Missouri?
Not 40, not 40.
40, 40, okay.
Actually, it was longer than 10 years ago, 10 years ago it was on the 40, so...
Oh, no, no.
We got three of them in Warrensburg now.
Oh, really?
Well, you know, the way that's always been like, like Burns, really officially, he should be the next pro tem. Don't have to, but John Culpatson will be there, he was on a long run, so...
Oh, Brian, are these your keys, or am I taking them?
Those are mine. It depends, if I run again...
Do we drag these in closer?
I would be very interested in being there, but I haven't decided that I'm running.
You better. I've had more people that watch the TV say that you really, you know, knowledgeable about the free...
It will be...
There's a lot of people that don't know, people like me, that I just know what gave